stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Let us please take a moment of silence to remember those lives we have recently lost from our community. Tonight, we honor Dr. Bill Bushing, Mr. Sam Riccolo, and Mr. Chris Barrios. Our thoughts and prayers go out to their family members, friends, and those in extended communities these persons' lives have touched. Thank you. You may be seated. Denise, can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember De La Rosa.
Here.
Councilmember Lavelle.
Here.
Councilmember Ponce.
Here.
Mayor Protem Cassidy.
Here.
Mayor Marshall.
Here.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we, City Manager, do we have any announcements or written communications?
I have, Councilmember Ponce is going to read a proclamation.
Fantastic.
A proclamation of the City Council of the City of Avalon, recognizing January 23rd through the 29th, 2022, as Avalon School Choice Week. Whereas all children in Avalon should have access to the highest quality education possible, and whereas Avalon recognizes the important role that an effective education plays in preparing all students in Avalon to be successful adults, and whereas quality education is critically important to the economic vitality of Avalon, and whereas educational variety not only helps to diversify our economy, but also enhances the vibrancy of our community, and whereas Avalon has many high-quality teaching professionals who are committed to educating our children, and whereas School Choice Week is celebrated across the country by millions of students, parents, educators, schools, and organizations to raise awareness of the need for effective educational options. Therefore, be it resolved that Ann Marshall, Mayor of the City of Avalon, does hereby proclaim January 23rd through the 29th, 2022, as Avalon School Choice Week dated this 18th day of January, 2022.
Beautiful. Thank you very much. I believe we have two presentations on our meeting tonight. Denise, would you like to introduce those?
Yes, we have Amanda Tripiano with De Novo Planning Group, and this is on the city's draft 2021-2029 housing element. And I have not met her personally, so nice to meet you, Amanda. She had been working closely with Michael Palmer in planning before his departure, so she is going to walk us through this. And there is no council action required this evening. It will be on tomorrow evening's Planning Commission agenda, and then we will be having a special meeting on February 10th for it, the City Council. Okay, Amanda.
Great. Thank you so much. Good evening, Councilmembers. My name is Amanda Tripiano, and I am a principal with De Novo Planning Group. We are a land use and environmental planning firm, and we're excited to be working with the city on your housing element update. So I only have a brief presentation for you tonight. Again, no action is requested of you. Just want to make sure that you're informed about the process and the next steps that we'll be taking over the coming month. So with that, I do have a presentation that I believe is loaded and ready to be shown, operated out of the council chambers. I'm certainly also able to share my screen with the presentation if that is a preferred option, or I can just give it in a narration form as well.
If you have the presentation, I'll make you the host.
That would be great. I would love to do it, then I can advance my slide, so yes. Or you can make me the co-host, whatever you need to do.
Okay, Amanda, you got.
All right, I'm there. I've got all the privileges. I will be responsible. All right, with that, I'll go ahead and start this presentation and be happy to answer any questions you might have. All right, so this is the process that we are working through to prepare the city's housing element. It's a multi-month and year-long effort. We are nearing the end. We are in kind of the last quarter, where we're hosting a series of public hearings, and of course, tonight's study session presentation to review the draft element and then ultimately adopt it and send it to the state for final review and certification. And I'll talk more about that in just a moment. So part of this process is to engage your community, both residents, persons working in your community, to understand the housing issues facing the City of Avalon. So it's a particularly unique time to conduct public outreach right now, but we are working hard to do so. So the city has implemented a creative approach to solicit feedback through online surveys, both in English and in Spanish, posting flyers, hosting an in-person open house in early November, and soliciting public comments on the draft element for the 30-day review period that was hosted from early December through early January. So looking forward to just understanding how Avalon plans for housing. We're going to take a step back and just understand what is a housing element and what's the city's responsibility in planning for new growth over the next eight years. So the housing element is one chapter of a city's general plan. Every city and county in California has to have one, and Avalon is no different. It lays out the goals, policies, and programs that guide decision-making about specifically residential development for a specific set of time, and that's called your planning period. And it lasts for eight years, and this is dictated by state law. So every eight years, the city needs to update its housing element, and that's the process that we're in right now. Our goal is to receive adoption of the draft housing element by February 12th, which is the target date to remain kind of in good standing with this update cycle. So the city's housing element really plans to accommodate its portion of fair share regional housing growth. So starting at the top, the state of California has declared that the, across the state, California is suffering from a shortage of housing units. And it describes a projection of what's needed in order to address that deficiency. Through a series of working through metropolitan planning organizations, and then ultimately at the local level, each individual agency, like the City of Avalon, receives its personal allocation of future growth. So the total growth across the state is 3.4 million units over the next eight years. The Southern California Association of Governments Metropolitan Planning Organization that Avalon is part of received an allocation from that of 1.2 or 1.3 million units. And then using a set series of methodologies, the city itself receives its allocation that I'll spend a few more minutes talking about. So looking just at population growth in Avalon is a unique indicator compared to other communities because so much of the development on the island is certainly constrained by limited vacant land and access to necessary infrastructure such as water. So the city receives its regional housing needs allocation, or its RENA, again, through SCAG. And it's the city's responsibility to show that there's enough land available to allow the private market to develop its regional fair share of growth. And your RENA is broken down by income category as well. So the state says not all units are created equal. The city needs to plan to accommodate different household income types. So they can't all be just luxury single-family homes. You need to think about addressing the needs of all your different community members. So the city's RENA for the 2021 or through 2029 planning period is 27 units, and about half of those are dedicated to serving very low or low-income households. So the city itself, of course, does not in and of itself build housing. But the private market builds housing, but it's the city's responsibility to set the stage through your policy documents, like your housing element and your general plan and your zoning code, to allow development to occur to meet that regional fair share. And of course, housing serving different household incomes looks differently. It comes in different shapes and sizes. So we've all probably lived in different types of housing in our life, and people with different backgrounds or lifestyle choices like to live in different types of homes. So planning for things like accessory dwelling units, duplexes, single-family homes, or multifamily homes, all are part of the city's responsibility in planning for future housing. Additionally, we have to think about how projects are affordable. So different types of projects can be affordable to different incomes, but don't need to look a lot different. With good quality design standards and architectural requirements, a city could receive two projects that look very similar. So that brings us to your actual physical housing element draft that we'll be sharing with the Planning Commission at a public hearing tomorrow. It's essentially broken into two parts. The first part is the housing plan. This is the first 40 pages or so of the document that talks about your goals, policies, and programs, outlines quantified objectives, and really describes the policy framework for decisions related to housing during this planning period. The second part is really the remainder of the document. It's the background report. It includes all the analysis and details, really complying with state law, to address things like the city's progress towards meeting its prior cycle accomplishments, an assessment of your current housing needs, a review of potential constraints to development, a discussion of available resources, and a new requirement to study fair housing issues. The city includes five goals as part of its housing element, and all of these goals are largely the same as are included in your current housing element. So goals should stand the test of time. They should, you know, be visionary and forward-looking. So it's common that they continue to be relevant as you move forward into the updated element. But where we did see some significant changes was to the programs that really guide how the city invests time and resources to address housing issues. There are 23 programs included in the housing element, and 11 of those are carryover programs, meaning they were included and you're already doing them as part of your current housing element. And then there are 12 new programs that really have been included to address state law and better position the city to accommodate future development over the next eight years. So in terms of planning for your RENA of those 27 units, we get to look at two categories. The first is progress towards meeting your RENA, things that have happened since July 1st of last year. So things are ongoing, and we look to that to understand the city's progress towards accommodating its fair share. And then the second part is accommodating your remaining RENA. So after we look at progress, we have to see what sites are available to accommodate any portion of your fair share that's left. So on the screen is a summary of a table included in the housing element that just describes the city's strategy to accommodate its RENA. So after deducting for credits, which are all in the above moderate income category, the city has a remaining RENA of 16 units. And those units can be accommodated without the need to rezone, redesignate, or upzone sites. You have sufficient sites available at the appropriate densities and intensities to accommodate the city's RENA and in fact, provide a surplus at all income levels as well. So the process over the next month is going to be continuing to work with the State Department of Housing and Community Development, who is responsible for reviewing all housing elements prior to their adoption. A draft of the housing element was sent to the department in early December, and we expect comments back by the end of this month. Again, we're hosting a public hearing tomorrow with the Planning Commission, and then we'll be in front of the City Council for a public hearing in February. Following the adoption of the housing element, we send that back to the state, and they are provided a second opportunity to review and confirm that we addressed any potential requests that they had to modify the draft. So with that, that concludes my presentation for tonight. So I'm going to go ahead and stop sharing my screen and then look for direction on who I need to return the host duties to. And I am excited to be working with you and look forward to seeing you again in February.
Thank you, Amanda, very much. Fellow councilmembers, does anybody have any questions?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Amanda. We appreciate your being here. What a wonderful presentation. Thank you. Okay, Denise.
Who should I, who should I return the host duties to? Should that go back to COA podium?
You can send that to back.
I'll send that back to you, Jamie.
Yes, please.
All right.
Thank you so much. Okay, Denise, we can move to our second presentation from Southern California Edison. Actually, it's okay. I'll just go ahead and introduce Luke Shaner from Southern California Edison. Will be providing a Catalina Water Availability and Allocation Plan update. Luke?
Thank you, and I wonder if I need to present as well, or is the team able to present the deck we sent over?
Hello, Luke. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I hear you. Can you hear me?
Yeah. Hey, it's Vic.
Hi, Vic. Welcome. Vic Knoll, also from Southern California Edison. Before you begin, Jamie, would you like them to share their screen, or do you have the presentation available? Jamie?
Mayor Protem, when Luke presents, I think, I believe he could share his screen, but if I could make a couple comments just before Luke presents?
Sure, sure. Let me, let me just make sure what our staff needs from you guys.
Sure.
Yeah, so this is Jamie. So this is Jamie. So should I make the host, Luke? Do you have the presentation?
That'll work. You're not able to hear me, though.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Oh, great. Okay.
Okay.
Let me.
Luke, you guys can sort that out. Vic, go ahead and then move forward if you'd like.
Thanks, Mayor Protem, and thank you for having us here this evening, and councilmembers. My name is Vic Knoll. I'm Southern California Edison's Government Relations Manager for the City of Avalon. I'm here with my colleague Luke Shaner to provide a presentation on the Catalina Water Availability and Allocation Plan update as follow-up to the one given in May of last year. But before I turn it over to Luke, I'd also like to share some information on our Catalina Island RFI. Last Friday, SCE launched a Catalina Island RFI, which is a request for information. The purpose of the RFI is to solicit information on energy products and solutions that could complement and/or displace the use of diesel generators for power generation on the island as part of our Catalina Island Repower Project and long-term clean energy strategy for the island. Tomorrow, Wednesday, January 19th, from 10:00 to 11:30, SCE will be hosting an RFI webinar conference to discuss the RFI and potential future procurement events for the island. SCE would like to encourage any interested parties in the community that would like more information and/or want to view tomorrow's RFI webinar to visit the Catalina Island RFI page of our website. The easiest way to get to that page is to simply Google SCE Catalina RFI, and it'll be the first page listed. With that, please let me turn it over to Luke.
Great. Thank you, Vic. And can I confirm that you all see the presentation?
Yes.
All right, wonderful. Let's go through it. So as Vic mentioned, my name's Luke Shaner, support Catalina Utility Operations. It's a privilege to be back here again, albeit virtually, to provide a water utility update as a follow-up to what we shared last May. What this presentation will center around are four key areas. First will be the general water update, including the current reservoir status and recent water trends. Next, we'll share the Water Allocation Plan update, including elements of the recently approved Advice Letter 123W. Third, we will share an update as it relates to grant funding, including the D-Sale Enhancement Phase 1 project. And then lastly, we'll close with key next steps we anticipate on continuing before, between now and the next time we come to share an update. So as it relates to water availability or the water condition on the island, first, I want to recognize that last summer and fall, we saw many communities on the California mainland experience drought conditions and water shortages. Places like Mendocino, Cambria entered stage four of their six-stage water shortage contingency plan. And many know all too well how impactful that can be here on Catalina. So we are encouraged that those levels have not been faced as of late. We appreciate the many days, months, and years of active conservation by the community. And we're also encouraged by the consistent D-Sale production levels achieved by Catalina Island operations, averaging just over 200 acre feet for the last couple of years. So where do we stand today? First, with the chart on the left, you see the Middle Ranch Reservoir level. The green line is highlighted, and that represents where we are today. And to the left, the area in blue is where we've been and what levels we've measured.
I think so. Yeah.
And then on the right, you see what the drought condition forecast is and what it means on the reservoir level going forward if we were to continue to experience drought conditions on the island.
Excuse me, Luke. Excuse me. I need to interrupt. This is Annie Marshall, and I'm working from home just on my phone, so I can't see any of the chart. So would you be so kind as just to throw out some of those numbers for me? I appreciate it.
Yes, absolutely. Just getting into that. Where we are today as of our reading in early January, the reservoir measures at about 65% capacity. That coincides with 687.69 acre feet. And with the drought condition forecast, this would estimate a stage-one event in the summer of this year and a stage-two event in late 2023. Important to highlight that this drought forecast is a tool for us to monitor as we develop various programs and projects. For example, we'll highlight a few policy updates and water supply upgrades that we're actually targeting to complete before a stage-two event would be imposed on the island. And also, what we have highlighted at the top, the December rainfall helped temporarily halt the ongoing reservoir drawdown that was experienced much of the last year. So actually, you don't see it yet, but you'll, we'll expect to see it in the coming months, but a stop and a gradual increase in the reservoir level. And with continued inflow and future winter storms, expect this condition to improve more. And then any inflow that's not measured as of late December will defer that stage-one and stage-two event that I just announced. So we're hopeful that that's the case, but on a conservative worst-case scenario, that's what we've earmarked on this chart here.
Thank you.
Any questions on the reservoir level? So the chart on the right shows monthly trends in water demands for the Avalon D-Sale distribution. The blue bar is representing 2021, and then the orange bar is representing 2019. And 2019, we have up there because that's when the system exited stage-one conditions in January of that year. And it's the best usage summer we have prior to the COVID pandemic. We observe in the recent data that demands continue increasing. The 2021 year-end water requirement climbed from about 13% higher than 2019 and 9% higher than 2020. Certainly acknowledge a lot of the hardships felt by the community with the ongoing pandemic, and also appreciate those that have been able to maintain water conservation habits and efforts. And just want to take this opportunity to highlight that. Again, now more than ever, it's important to practice smart water habits where we can. A link in the slide deck has resources and information from the California Department of Water Resources as it relates to conservation tips. And then Vic, I think you also have a couple advertisements to provide an update on that are forthcoming. Vic, you ready for the baton? And if I caught Vic off guard, I think there's a couple of the normal bulletins looking just to update the water conservation ad in those so that over the calendar year 2022, that's in there throughout the year to help remind customers and visitors alike of the pressing need to conserve water. Oops. Let's go back here. Any other questions on this slide before we move on?
I don't believe so. Go ahead and move forward.
Okay, thank you. Next is the latest update as it relates to water availability and the water allocation plan. So this slide is an abbreviated background of where we've been up until now. Upon exiting stage-one drought conditions in 2019, efforts helped formalize the water availability methodology for Catalina. In May of last year, we presented that summary, that methodology, to the community, introducing the calculation that looked at average day and maximum day conditions and assessing the system's ability to meet current and future demands, including those on the allocation waitlist. We are encouraged to report that as of last month, the commission formally approved Advice Letter 123W. This came after an initial filing in January of 2021 and supplementary filings in May and September of last year. So I've outlined some of the key utility tariff updates as a result of this approval. First, and predominantly being that Schedule Freshwater Yield, FWY, as it's referred to, it now incorporates D-Salination production of 147.8 acre feet per year, and that's the limit in the coastal development permit. We still produce as much as we can above and beyond that, but that would be the limit that we're currently authorized to put in our tariffs based on how the permits are written today. Second, Schedule FWY now incorporates distribution isolation points, recognizing which water sources are connected to the various distributions on the island. Third, Schedule FWY defines the methodology for calculating water availability as we go forward so that we can use it for allocation purposes as supply and demand conditions change over time. And third, Rule 3 now allows historical usage levels to be considered in calculating the water requirement of a customer proposing to change their existing facilities and water allocation. So these areas we saw to enhance the tariffs to provide greater flexibility in meeting current and future water demands on the island. And so we were going up into this meeting, putting finishing touches on the various operational protocols that are updated as a result of this new decision. Advice Letter 123W. Didn't finish all of it, so we will work with city staff to schedule a time to come back and share the details and how that rolls out on the next, you know, six, 12, and 18 months, and how it impacts the water allocation plan going forward. We actually expect and hope to provide some positive results and impacts once we incorporate data through the end of last year. And once we have that, we'll come back and share the results. Yes.
Can I just ask you a quick question about that? So it's my understanding that Edison was going to start handing out some allocations in February. Is that still the case?
We believe that as we're implementing this decision, that it reinforces surplus for the majority of the waitlist. But we're just waiting for some final details to come in on the year-end data. And once we have that, then we'll be formalizing that communication and coming back and probably more definitively sharing that update.
Okay, so would it be, would it be best to just say we would love to see you guys back at the next meeting or the meeting after that, to give us an update on that?
Yep, I think we're optimistically looking to come to the second meeting in February to share those results.
Okay.
And worst case, it would be March, but yeah, it's a top priority for us to come back with that information.
Okay, thank you.
So on that. So on that, this is some really excellent news. Thank you very much. This is Annie. So what we used to call the safe annual yield, you're now calling the AFY. So was, was it at 1.515 or something like that? And now it's up to 600 and something? Is there a beginning and a total number?
Yes, yes, and yes, and yes, all those. It's, it's, we use the safe annual yield, the freshwater yield, the perennial yield, all in acre feet per year units, um, but it essentially saying the same thing. And the, the limit of that is that 636.8 acre feet. Um, and then how we, how that um, you know, refines to the middle ranch Avalon Toyon Integrated System and how it, how it uh, refines to the Isthmus Two Harbors uh, Integrated System. And where we stand today versus where that yield uh, limit is established. Um, that's the chart we're looking to bring back to you next month and help educate everybody on the result of this, this decision and how it translates with the safe annual yield and um, present ability to, to um, honor allocations on the waitlist.
Great, thank you, Luke.
And um, next, just wanted to highlight that this, so this advice letter was, was great. I mean, we, we thought it would be done in 30 days. It took almost 10 months to complete, but a really positive milestone. And um, you know, we're, as we progress that, still mindful of other areas to improve water availability. Um, including water master plan development, um, on the heels of completing the drought contingency plan. Water resource upgrades, notably the D cell enhancements phase one project, and then continuing to manage non-revenue water. And strategically pursue policy updates where it makes sense, which we'll, we'll get into in a couple of slides. As of December of last year, the water allocation waitlist totaled 32 requests, requiring a combined 42.3 acre feet per year. And roughly 80% of that volume is within the middle ranch Avalon Toyon system. Any other questions before we move to the next slide?
I think we're good.
Okay, next, uh, just wanted to cover some highlights on, as it relates to grant funding. So we continue to pursue alternative funding sources through the state, through the federal uh, agencies to help increase drought resiliency for Catalina and also reduce rate impacts to the customers. So what this lists are those that are well underway right now. Um, and we hope to, to, you know, report progress on with these recurring updates. So first is the United States Bureau of Reclamation or USBR. Um, the drought contingency plan, we entered into agreement in 2019 so that they would provide 100,000 towards the development of this plan. Happy to report it's in its final stages. Um, plan issuance is expected for, by late March of this year, um, approved by the Bureau of Reclamation. The link I have there, um, Jordan actually helped us set up when we kicked it off. Um, I'm in the process of getting the, all the task force presentations so that they're available at that link. I think two of the seven are there currently, but that helps show the story of the composition of the various chapters of that plan. Um, next is the California Department of Water Resources, DWR, D cell plant two project or grant. Happy to report that last July, we finalized the agreement uh, between Edison and Department of Water Resources. This anticipates a $2.3 million reimbursement. And this amount associates with the maximum eligible costs, given the retroactive nature of this grant award. As all the work would be completed prior to the agreement being signed. Um, so what we look forward to this year is uh, finalizing the invoice reports and getting those invoices submitted to the DWR so that um, we receive that reimbursement. Um, happy to all, report as I did before, D cell plant two production, I think it's totaling right around 203 acre feet for last year. Um, it's lifetime production average trends at around 179 acre feet per year compared to plant one's lifetime production average of about 113 acre feet per year. So helps reinforce the benefit of that project of the grant. Um, and just good empirical data we're collecting. Uh, third, also with the Department of Water Resources is the D cell enhancements phase one grant and projects. Last September, we finalized that grant agreement and it anticipates $10 million being reimbursed. It, that amount associates with the maximum amount offered through this grant opportunity. Uh, next slide, we'll have the milestone schedule summary, but we're targeting operation in late 2023, early 2024. Um, and we'll show you those key tasks and assumptions um, going into that timeline. And lastly is the USBR Water Resources Grant Opportunity. This close, this uh, application window closed in December of last year. And we were glad to actually submit an application. It's the first time we've submitted an application for a federal grant construction project. So look forward to continuing to increase the experience um, as it relates to those opportunities. And we've requested 1.2 million to go towards increasing Avalon storage capacity, actually considered within the D cell enhancements phase one project. So a portion of what's not funded by DWR. And since it's a federal opportunity find, you know, hoping to get that, a portion of it funded through the federal um, agency. So we do await a decision by June of this year. Um, and also wanted to recognize the conservancy and Tony Bitrovich and helping provide a support letter in an extremely narrow window. Um, so we'll report on what we hear later this year, um, hopefully between April and June. Any questions on uh, the grant summary here? Before we look at the second enhancement phase one, go ahead.
I have a couple of questions, more general in nature and so the prop one money. Is this the prop one money broken down or is this something totally different?
Uh, DWR. The bullets here associate with the prop one money. So the 2.3 million and then the 10 million.
Okay, and then part of that prop one was supposed to be, the installation of two deep water wells. Saltwater wells, where is that and how is that going or whatever?
So uh, the next slide, I'll get into those details.
Okay, then I'll wait till I get that.
Yeah.
Then you said something, then said something about a reimbursement. Um, does that mean the city will be getting their half a million dollars back for the D cell plant?
So um, I, I believe we're actually reviewing the, or mindful of that agreement and those reimbursement obligations as we receive um, reimbursement from the state. And so that we're um, diligent on our compliance with that agreement. Um, all, yeah, well, let me put down the invoicing plan and schedule on yeah, paper and kind of get back to the timeline, um, we'd anticipate getting um, reimbursement payments to the city.
Great, okay.
Was that your only que, that, that was everything, Annie?
For now, yes, thank you.
Okay, great.
So the next slide, we could get into a little more details on the D cell enhancements phase one project. This is the perspective D cell infrastructure upgrades. Um, and again, some are, are aware that this uh, project in this scope is informed by the 2017 D cell feasibility study. And we're continuing to proceed with this project in alignment with this study with the implementation plan. The current first phase that is underway now, um, that we just completed a 60% design for targets, increasing the seawater well capacity from 400 gallons per minute to 750 gallons per minute. And that allows us to maximize the existing pipeline infrastructure between the wells and the D cell plant. In our 30% design, we, we identified and targeted two wells, uh, but with a 60% design refinement and further due diligence. We actually expect to accomplish that production with just one well. And then also help value engineer some of that scope so we don't incur those costs and can, can ensure we achieve the benefit within the constraints of the grant and the schedule. Um, so that's one scope and that, that seawater well capacity upgrade is the biggest component of the in, increased demand we're targeting here. Um, I mentioned we're producing 200 acre feet per year right now. As a result of this project, we're looking to, to produce more than 300 acre feet on an annual basis. Um, average around 317 acre feet per year, based on how the funding agreement was executed. So it's a substantial um, increase um, for water supplies on the island. But most of that is tied to that new seawater well. Uh, the second component is um, upgrading the existing D cell treatment plant. Uh, we're looking at um, pre-reverse osmosis or RO treatment components like our cartridge filtration. Um, and we're looking at the RO membranes to the extent we could replace them and uh, achieve a greater production capacity. Our post RO calcite contactors, chemical systems and loading systems so that we increase the daily production and the annual uptime rate of the facility. Um, I think this last year, we registered between 80 to 85% uptime rate. As a result of this project with the enhancements, we're looking to achieve a 90 to 95% uptime rate, um, potentially even greater. On a consistent, ongoing basis, um, year after year for 10 years, 20 years. Um, a 30, a 30-year useful life is connected to the project. Um, the D cell treatment components, I think it would be the second critical component of achieving that production benefit I mentioned. And then the third is increasing distribution storage. Um, we're looking to do this by adding a fourth tank in Falls Canyon adjacent to the existing three storage tanks, uh, which many refer to as Baker Tanks. And then also taking the opportunity to upgrade the valves and control system to allow for more seamless integration with the D cell treatment facility and manage and giving operations a better ability to manage uh, the system from the plant. Um, in our, just want to identify that in our 30%, similar to how we had two seawater wells in that 30% design. Um, going from 30% to 60% here, we're actually trying to, to uh, install the Wrigley Pipeline. Um, unfortunately, the additional due diligence we did, as we did potholing to try to validate the coupling ratings of that new system would be adequate. We could not um, validate that. And so instead of uh, replacing 30% of that pipeline, it prompted a requirement to replace 100% of that pipeline. And so when we did that, it quickly um, ballooned the budget uh, beyond the, the grant requirements. And it even introduced greater construction complications, getting a completed project within the grant schedule. Um, so we still think we could achieve the initial production benefit with a scaled back uh, distribution storage component of this project.
Luke, sorry, Annie, one moment. Does that mean that that um, project is not going to move forward to connect from the tanks up to the reservoir?
I would not say that. Uh, that's a good question. I think at this time it's deferred from phase one into uh, phase three or phase four. And we got into some of the nitty gritty with the drought contingency plan, really looking at uh, distribution demand trends and, and increasing D cell production capacity. So you bring on that infrastructure when you're going to use it most. And so, I mean, the, the, the plan right now is to this phase one project. And then actually the next uh, recommended upgrade is actually replacing plant one with newer technology. And then um, adding a well, adding a pipeline and/or adding that Wrigley Pipeline would be that third to fourth project they recommend.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mayor Marshall, you had a question?
I was just curious on that because, well, two questions. If you were looking at a fourth tank, how many gallons would something like that hold?
So the existing tanks hold about 375,000 gallons nominal. And with the fourth tank, we're gonna hold 500,000 gallons nominal, so about a half a million gallons. So I think it's a roughly 33% improvement.
Okay, and then, so if, what are we using the Wrigley, how is a Wrigley reservoir even get any water in it when it's got that thing on it? What is its use if we can't use it?
Wrigley water sources from the middle ranch wells. And it, um, it provides backup water for Avalon and it also augments Avalon for whatever we can't meet with D cell. Um, the middle ranch wells provide via Wrigley Reservoir and actually right now um, demand exceeds um, D cell production capacity for 10 to 12 months of the year. Um, this past, these past 12 months, um, all the two months there, there, or I, let me take that back. Um, demand exceeds current D cell production capacity with our phase one enhancements, demand would even exceed that production capacity, all but maybe um, December and January. So we're seeing with the most recent distribution trends that um, today and even after phase one, not a whole lot of water would be able to be sent through that, that pipeline.
Okay, thank you.
And then lastly, oh, go ahead.
No, go ahead. You're going, you're doing great.
The uh, the reservoir is a, is an important infrastructure in providing emergency storage and fire suppression reserve. So even though it's a, a large uh, reservoir, um, I think you've heard nine million gallon reservoir. Not all of that is a, a tank that you could empty all the way down to zero and then fill back up in the off season. Um, it's, it's important to have 10 days of emergency reserve as well as your minimum fire suppression reserves. And that takes up the bulk of that um, storage infrastructure. So that's another key component. As you look at balancing all those and, and trying to measure when to prudently bring online a Wrigley Pipeline. Further supported deferring it to a, a phase three or phase four D cell project.
Good, thank you for explaining Wrigley reservoir. I appreciate it.
Oh, good questions. So as mentioned, uh, last year, completed the 60% design, completed the grant funding agreement this year. Um, and actually hopefully this month or as soon as possible is getting the actual permit application submitted for this project. Some of the key open items are property owner approval. Um, and finalizing the project description, um, specifically the shoreline protection, the rip rap um, strategy down by the, the new well. Um, and then looking to um, in the second quarter of this year is to bring the 60% design definition to a 90% design definition. Um, looking to reflect well and pipeline easement details and actually equipment manufacturer drawing details and specs. Any other, I think that does it on D cell enhancements phase one unless there's questions.
Counsel, does anybody have any questions? Okay, Luke, go ahead and move forward.
Okay, so this is the last slide here. Um, just wanted to cover what I haven't already and, and what we're looking for, looking forward to doing going forward. Um, as I mentioned, we're finishing up the drought contingency plan. And as we do that, we're going to then focus to the more comprehensive water utility master plan. We're aiming to complete that during this upcoming thi, this year. And so the next step is issuing that request for proposals um, to qualified engineers. Uh, we talked about water resource improvements as the D cell enhancements phase one project. Third, policy update. So as we're looking to fully implement advice letter 123W, we're mindful of what's the next strategic optimal updates we want to apply to the tariffs. Um, any tariff changes has to be reviewed and approved by the CPUC. But what we look to do um, this coming year and draft, start to draft. And this is building on what we learned during the last drought. This is based on what's been recommended via the drought contingency plan and then what we're observing with D cell production trends. Um, we're looking to um, propose changes to rationing thresholds um, within the middle ranch Avalon Toyon system based on recent drought experience. So for example, during stage two, if 25% was required and 40% resulted. Um, there may be the case to alleviate that requirement, knowing what the response will be. Second, looking to update the rationing rates for customers connected to um, the D cell distribution based on the latest demand trends and D cell capacity. Um, so for example, we would look to lessen stage two, three and four rationing requirements and kind of balance that demand response with D cell production capacity. So we're producing all we can out of D cell and we're, you know, not rationing more than we would need to based on the increasing D cell capacity. Um, next, uh, looking to modify conservation and rationing thresholds for customers supported by remote, isolated and more vulnerable supplies. Um, so instead of using the middle ranch reservoir level to gauge those um, rationing levels and set points, using the local groundwater levels to help reinforce what happens and when. And then lastly, um, look what we're doing on the electric side and, and find a way to establish a water flex alert conservation tool to help reduce demand during peak season or system outages, especially with the D cell plant. Um, again, a lot of these were identified and, and memorialized or reinforced with the drought contingency plan and, and some of the ongoing discussions with that task force and, and the team supporting that. And looking to continue the momentum here now in some formal policy um, changes. changes and requests.
Luke, could you just explain or flesh out a little bit more when you say establish a Water Flex Alert conservation tool to help reduce demand during peak season or system outages? What exactly does that mean?
So on the mainland, maybe the best analogy I could say is when we know it's going to be really hot, everybody's going to be running ACs, and the system is reliant on solar and not a little, not a lot of fossil fuel generation so that you're not going to have as much generation capacity to meet these growing demands, especially during these really hot periods. The utility issues communications to tell customers to stop or reduce usage between peak periods, like from, I don't know, 4:00 in the afternoon till 9:00 PM. And then, you know, do not start your electronic appliances before then adjust your thermostats, so you're just reducing your usage so that we don't have to implement, you know, outages on the distribution. So it's kind of taking that same concept and applying it to Catalina Water. So we look at, okay, we know in the peak season, demand starts to really go, you know, increase fast, and depending on our water level, you know, is it outpacing our current supply capacity based on the reservoir level? Or did something break on the D-SAL plant, or was there an outage that took it offline for a week or that we weren't expecting? And having the ability to quickly communicate that to customers so that those decisions could be made and actions enacted to, to help reduce utility consumption during those types of periods. We're looking to really start to draft it now, so maybe it's not perfect, but we have it in the tool belt, that if we were to ever go into a Stage 2 or Stage 3, it's refined and it's more available so that we're communicating it, and we're seeing tangible results that help extend limited supplies.
Luke, other question, is, are those flexer only for residential properties, or will you also be doing it for commercial?
We haven't gotten into that, those specifics yet. I anticipate we'll try to make it the general enough to apply to both. But yeah, I mean, to your point, it's probably going to, the different tactics or what customers are able to do will vary between, between the utility schedules.
Good question.
Thank you.
Counsel, do we have any further questions for Luke?
No, I'm just really, really happy you came, and I'm glad they sent you, Luke.
Happy to be here. Thank you for the kind words.
You're very knowledgeable, and I think we've gotten a lot of direct answers today that we just haven't heard much out of Edison, so I'm glad you're coming up with, and you're keeping us in the loop, and you've given us a really good outlook on what's happening going forward, so thank you.
You're welcome. I look forward to coming back and hopefully next month here, so thank you.
Hopefully in person!
Luke, before I fully let you go, I just want to make sure there's no questions from staff. And I don't believe so. Okay, thank you both.
Did anybody call in, Cindy? Did anybody call in?
Uh, is Matt still there? Denise, if you're, okay, Denise, we're not hearing anything from your microphone, by
It looks like their mic is on mute.
No, you are.
Lisa, I cannot hear you as well. It does appear on our screen, okay, that might have fixed it. Lisa, go ahead, you had a question for Luke?
I did, yeah. So I was just going to ask Luke, I know that the CPUC just put out today an update regarding the emergency load reduction program, which would allow for residential customers' flex uses to be able to receive rebates for electricity energy saved. I'm wondering if we can look at a program like that for water as well. I think that that was one of the questions we'd had originally when the D-SAL plant was high production during peak hours, but then low production, of course, during the middle of the night or in times when people weren't using the system as much, to be able to kind of measure out some of that usage and allow for, you know, if you're able to do laundry at night or run dishes after a certain hour, or do those types of things, if that could potentially help with saving the system and/or providing a rebate for people.
I've taken note of those. I think those are great ideas and elements for us to explore as we put together that Advice Letter and kind of what's all involved with the Water Flex Alert. I don't want to take too much credit, I mean, I'm just kind of relaying a lot of what was high-level recommendations in the drought contingency plan, but we really do, the next step is getting into the details here and finding what makes sense to for Catalina and leveraging, you know, some of those electric programs and seeing how they could apply to Catalina Water. So I think when you start to, when you start to, when we start to prepare those Advice Letter drafts, we'll look to extend those for, you know, peer review by the city staff and the team here to try to flush out those questions and clarifications. But yeah, thank you, really appreciate the input and suggestions.
Thank you. And then also, just a question, if there's any type of legislation or plan to put in place. It seems that every drought within that contingency plan, and I have not read that plan yet, so I'm looking forward to reading that, but it seems that it often is the case that Edison overbudgets on water usage or income from drought times and then has to file an Advice Letter because they did not get the adequate money they were expecting because we conserved so well. So the feeling that we get from a lot of the community is that they're tired of having to conserve when they end up having to pay extra because they conserved so well. Is there any type of plan in place that would limit the amount of money Edison can recoup for poor budgeting or are excelling at conserving water?
So largely, I probably don't have that information readily available. What I do know is timely calibrations of what's happening on a year-to-year basis and trying to get, comparing that to forecasts helps mitigate the, any variance, so it doesn't compound year after year. And I believe that is in place right now where we're able to look at it annually to make sure either deficits or surpluses don't get too, too great and help control those consistent, consistent rates. But I think your first question kind of applies to something greater and almost statewide as it relates to where's the balance in conservation and customer affordability, which we'll have to look into and continue to find the right strategy for the island. At this time, I don't have any information to share.
Thank you.
Great questions. Matt, could you let us know, could you let us know if we have any comments from the public?
I do not have any public comments on this topic.
Great, thank you. Counsel, anything further for Luke Gervick? Okay, thank you so much for the presentation. Can we trouble you for a copy of that for the city so we can distribute it to counsel?
Yep. My Devon, I provided to Devon, so he can extend it, so.
We'll make you a copy of it, and we'll also post it on the city website.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Okay, moving on to department head reports.
Good evening, Bob Greenlaw, Director of Public Works. Got one item to report. This afternoon, we had a saltwater break in our showers out on Casino Way, so they're going to be out of service for a few days. We did locate where the leak was happening, but it came through the ceiling and it got into the tile, so it's a little bit of a major repair, but staff is on it. We'll fix the leak tomorrow, get everything dried out, and we can get the showers opened up while we're doing the other repairs.
Electrical too, Bob?
Yeah, and it did get into some of the electrical there, but we think that we can make all that survive, so. Any questions for me?
No questions. I just wanted to say thank you guys for working on the end caps on the Dive Park stairs. They looked amazing and much appreciated.
Okay, I'll share that with staff, too. Thanks.
We have David Hart, Community Service.
I actually, I have nothing to report today. I will on the next council meeting.
Thank you, David.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Members of City Council, Orrin Cross-Darfin, Avalon Harbor Master. This month, Harbor Patrol officers have been largely focused on compliance training, while our EMTs are working with Chief Allegria to get documents in order as part of our EMT recertification process. Friday evening, January 14th, we had a small craft advisory for northeast winds to threaten Avalon and the San Pedro Channel. Patrol made the preparations to the harbor and advised boaters of the small craft advisory. Early Saturday, January 15th, Harbor received a tsunami warning, or excuse me, a tsunami advisory from the National Weather Service. An advisory is issued due to the threat of a tsunami, which may produce strong currents or waves dangerous to those in or near the water typically called when forecasted tsunami amplitudes are between 1 and 3 feet above the tidal conditions. I will defer to Chief Allegria regarding any notifications and command questions. Harbor Patrol removed all docks and floats from the attachments and the pier and the casino gas dock. All these floats were put in deep water, and we also moved any vessels that were in the shallow water out to deep water and slackened their lines. Through the event period from about 0700 to 1100 hours, minor changes in the harbor were observed, while tidal considerations were also taken into effect. On Saturday, January 8th, at approximately 1:30 PM, Harbor received a VHF radio call from a vessel reporting to be on fire just north of Avalon Harbor. Dispatch was notified, and Harbor Patrol responded to the vessel. Four persons were evacuated from the vessel by the patrol, and further assessment of the conditions of the vessel were completed by Baywatch Avalon and Avalon Fire. The vessel was later brought into Avalon under its own power using one engine and its bow thrusters. Okay, for the numbers, patrol moored 165 vessels for a total of 1,191 nights. Patrol assisted Baywatch and Fire at one time, warned and advised seven individuals of municipal code violations, and did 22 public assist and 153 security patrols of the facilities. Does anybody have any questions? Thank you.
Great update, thank you. Chief Allegria.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Michael Allegria, Fire Chief. As Orrin mentioned, Harbor, Baywatch, Avalon, Baywatch-Ismus, County Fire, all of us were in constant communication the morning of the tsunami advisory. We were in contact with Coast Guard and other lifeguard officials on the mainland. As for 4th of July, I'm working with Dave Hart to be updated, so we can be updated on all firework protocols. We're working on that now. And just as a reminder, some fire safety, 19 people lost their lives in New York on January 9th. The report is showing a malfunctioning space heater. Some rules for safety for space heaters, do not plug a space heater into an extension cord, plug it directly into the wall. Make sure you keep it, all flammable materials at least 3 feet away from the heater, and unplug the heater when not in use. Make sure you have a working smoking, smoke detector as well on your place. Any questions?
It's a quick, quick question. That was really good information. Is there any way that we can maybe post that on the city page or on Facebook just to get that information out?
Yes, we'll post it tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Finance, do we have an update from you today?
We do, but I'll defer to the Sheriff's Department first.
Oh, excuse me, I'm so sorry.
Hello, Cindy, Sergeant Grayson-Klein here for Captain Joe Badali, who's on vacation this week. We've been noticing compliance with the schoolchildren and the helmets on their bicycles. It seems that some of our proactive enforcement, along with visibility and speaking with them, has sunken with them very well. We noticed it in front of some of the major streets near Vons, and the kids are actually waving, and we're talking about it, and they understand the importance of wearing their helmets and obeying all the stop signs and the speed limits. We're also going to start working in conjunction, helping out the fire department in enforcing parking in the fire lanes. Beginning here at the beginning of the year, we're going to start, starting with warnings and then issuing citations. That way, the fire chief doesn't have to start worrying about that. The sheriffs will work in collaboration with him. And I noticed that I handle all the arrests that come across Avalon, and arrests have been down, I believe we have two since the beginning of the year, and those are just some minor drunken publics. So the reports are down, crime is down, and I think it's a lot of the proactive enforcement we're doing on Crescent, and when all the cruise ships come in, there's high visibility once they come off the tender as well as being in the shopping district. That's all I have to report. Any questions?
Thank you so much.
Matt Baker, Finance Director. Tomorrow, I'll be publishing the visitor-driven revenue report for the month of November. Once again, visitor-driven revenues, particularly TOT, were strong. TOT was up 38% for the month of November. That was driven by hotels, but actually vacation rentals were up, I believe, over 70%. I'll have the exact numbers in the report tomorrow. Harbor revenues were up, but not at the same levels. Cross-channel wharfage was up about 14%, and nightly moorings were up about 9%. Right now, I'm planning to have a mid-year budget review for the second meeting in February, that's February 15th, I believe. And then just as a reminder to the public, business licenses for 2022 were due January 15th. We will start sending out invoices with penalties and interest later this week for anyone who hasn't paid. So just encourage everyone to, if you haven't paid, to pay for your business license before we have to send out those notices. That's all I have, unless there's questions from Counsel.
Great, thank you so much. Okay, I believe that's all our department heads. City Manager, Ripport.
Well, I have a few things, Counsel. I just wanted to remind the citizens of Avalon that on the November 3rd, 2020 election, that they voted on Measure H, and it passed by approximately 72% of the voters, and that is a measure that increased wharfage on the cross-channel vessels and moorings to support the cost of, to replace the Catalina Island Medical Center. So on April 1st of 2022, an initial tax of 50 cents will be applied to all cross-channel travel each way, and an extra $1 per vessel per day for rented moorings within the harbor. And then also, the Los Angeles County has established the timeline for our next election, which will be on June 7th of 2022. The nomination period, which is when papers can be, can be pulled by candidates, future candidates, is February 14th starts and all the way to March 11th. And I'll be going over these dates again, so you don't need to remember them all, but those are the most important ones right there, March, or February 14th through March 11th. Vote-by-mail ballots will begin to be mailed out to residents on May 9th, and the last date to register to vote is May 23rd. And Election Day, as I said, is June 7th. Vehicle season is rapidly approaching. That starts February 1st and ends on Thursday, March 31st. There will be all kinds of publications in the paper, as well as a sign out by the street, and of course, as you enter City Hall, Monday through Thursday from 8:00 to 4:00, and we are closed every day for lunch and on Fridays. Let's see, and then I've been asked to, just to give a quick little report on the TBID, which is our Tourism Business Improvement District, that mailing the survey went out to all the businesses that have anything to do with TOT, which is the hotels and vacation rentals and golf cart rental businesses. And once the surveys are returned and they hit the threshold of over 50%, then that item comes before the city council. This item is approved by the city council and does not go to the voters at the June election. item is approved by the City Council and does not go to the voters at the June election. And then lastly, the new City Manager, Dave Maestros, will be at the next City Council meeting. He joins city staff on January 31st. Dave and his wife, Mary Beth, and I'm so excited that they will be joining our community.
Great. Thank you. Denise, one quick question. Is it possible for members of the community, if they needed to make an appointment such as vacation homeowners, could they make an appointment for a Friday to do vehicle stickers?
At this time-
Or is it just a no on Friday?
Yes. At this time right now, we're still closed on Fridays, Cindy's, but if you call City Hall, we have done certain things. But as of right now, Fridays are closed and they can always mail in as long as they send us a copy of their current registration and that way nobody will be late. And then after vehicle season, they would just come in at their convenience.
Oh, that's great. Okay, I'll help push that word out as well, that they, that they can call in and do by mail as well. Thank, well, thank you very much. City Attorney report.
No report tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember reports. Mike, with you?
I'll go first. Had a great vacation. Attended Cal City's Policy Committee orientation via Zoom in Mazatlan, Mexico, which was fun. And Dave Hart will be joining me in our first Policy Committee meeting, which are open to the public. And when we get the availability of registering him, we will, he will join me at that first policy meeting. And then that's all I have on that. But on a personal note, I would like to congratulate my niece, Sarah Jager, locally grown, who just became engaged and will be getting married either at the end of this year or beginning of next. Congratulations, Sarah.
Congratulations. Oh, that's sweet. Councilmember Lavelle?
I attended the California Air Resources Board along with Mayor Protem Cassidy, Greg Bombard, Jim Lutjehan, and a number of people regarding the commercial harbor craft changes that are coming. And we'll look forward to updates further in the year from that. And got some good news, at least that there may be some funds and assistance available to help with some of the upgrades and changes that are necessary where we thought the Express and/or the Flyer would not be eligible previously. So some encouraging news, hopefully, but we'll see if there's more we can do in the future to help out with that. Also attended the Island Connectivity Group and received just a preliminary update from Catalina Broadband regarding their first round of feasibility studies. And would just like some consensus from the Council to move forward with approaching the Middle Mile Committee that oversees some of the current project funds and implementation to be able to look at what the next steps would be to move forward with that, what is considered a Middle Mile project of the undersea fiber cable. Potentially to do outreach to help with funds for the next round of feasibility, which is about a $30,000 expenditure, and/or to move forward if there are funds available and applications open to be able to look at doing that project. Would you guys be okay with that? Yeah?
Yes, please.
Sure.
Okay, all right. And then finally, just a request to make sure that, as Denise mentioned with the election coming up, to go to lavote.net to check your registration. Make sure your address is current. It's great that everyone will be getting a vote-by-mail ballot, but you'll want to make sure that you have both your physical address and your mail-in address updated. And that if you are going to plan to vote in person, there will be, again, multiple days of voting, which Denise will let us know about in the future as well. But just making sure that that all is taken care of well before voting season. And that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, Lisa, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can, can Lisa hear me?
Yes.
Oh, so, so the redistricting thing, you know, that I said Ben Allen said he was disappointed, but it might be because he's disappointed he's not running. But is that really going to have a big impact on giving us part of Long Beach and then taking us out to some of those other cities?
The majority of everything that we've seen from redistricting is remaining the same or slightly changed and to our benefit. The biggest change is just the shape of the district for our state legislature, where previously with Congressman Loenthal, the coverage area had exceeded, had covered San Clemente, Catalina Island, parts of Long Beach, and as part of Orange County. That part of Orange County is now no longer part of that district, but extends further into covering more of Long Beach. But otherwise, our, our, one of our district numbers is changing for, I believe it's the state legislature. But otherwise, we are still relatively the same in terms of makeup and size and space of where we've been previously. So we're doing good.
And thank you for keeping up on that. Really appreciate it.
Sure, thank you.
Councilmember De La Rosa. De La Rosa?
Yes, I attended an event that South Coast Air held this last weekend. It was an annual service to celebrate Martin Luther King Jr. It was awesome. It was inspirational and they had a lot of good guests on there. Learned a lot. As well as attending the California Contract Cities Executive Board. And we are planning for them to come hold their next meeting all in April. If all goes well, they'll be able to come to Catalina and hold the meeting here. So hopefully that works out.
Fantastic. Great. Thank you so much. My only report, Lisa covered for me. One, attended the Air Quality Resources Board meeting, or I'm sorry, the AQMD meeting for, regarding the emissions on vessels and also the Connectivity Group meeting. So that's all I have to report for tonight. Mayor Marshall?
I just want to say, I'm so sorry I can't be there, but I will let you know, you know, you can go online now and get those free COVID tests. I have been feeling under the weather. Someone gave me one of their tests. I think I read it properly, but, so I just feel like I have a really bad cold, but I've been home and I'm safe and I'll be back on my feet in a couple of days. So everybody take care, be healthy.
Thank you. Okay, oral communication. Members of the public may address the City Council at this time. No action will be taken on non-agenda items at this meeting. Speakers should limit their comments to two minutes each. Do we have any members of the community in, and do we have anything on our system?
I do not have any comments through the e-comment system.
Nobody outside.
And there's nobody outside.
Great, thank you. Okay, Denise, I believe I turn it over to you for the consent calendar.
Yes, we have seven items that were published on our agenda this evening, but item number five is being moved to general business and item number seven is being removed from the agenda. So we have minutes from the January 4th regular City Council meeting. We have warrants for a total disbursement of $654,516.13 and that's for the time period of December 27, 2021 through January 7th, 2022. I see there's a change on the agenda there. Number three is to adopt a resolution establishing the City of Avalon's annual growth policy for 2022. The fourth one is to authorize the Harbor Master to contract with Al Larson Boat Shop, a sole-source vendor, for the repair and maintenance of city floats two and three for a sum not to exceed $249,999. The fifth one, which is item six on the consent calendar, is to adopt a resolution authorizing the City Manager to execute all documents necessary to secure funds and implement a potential Cal Recycle grant to support implementation of SB 1383.
Are there any questions from Council or any additional items you'd like to see pulled for discussion?
Nope.
Not hearing any. I'll entertain a motion for items one, two, four, and six. One, two, three, four, and six.
I'll second.
Councilmember De La Rosa, do you want to go ahead and make the motion? Okay, I'll make the motion to approve those items with Councilmember De La Rosa seconding.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Cassidy?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Okay. Item five, item five?
Moving on to general business and item five, which is the Fifth Amendment to the franchise lease agreement between the City of Avalon and CRNR Incorporated. We have been working towards strongly since last spring when we adopted the fees for the solid waste and sewer salt and, anyway, sorry, I lost my train of thought. And then we adopted the ordinance with all the, the fees for, on December 7th of 2021. I do have Mike Silva and Julie Beretta from Avalon Environmental, CRNR Incorporated, available for any questions. At the last City Council meeting of January 4th, city staff was tasked with coming back and answering questions that were asked by councilmembers. So to clarify, I'm just going to touch upon a couple of them because everything else is really spelled out in the staff report. The first one was what happens if the city gets the waiver for the implementation of AB, should be SB 1383. And in the event we would meet and confer, I want to stress that staff can meet and confer with CRNR, but the contract, and any amendments we make to a contract, has to come back to City Council for their approval. It's not just something that staff and CRNR can make amendments to their agreement. It all has to come to the City Council. The second one was about the fines that were imposed and that was outlined in our municipal code that we adopted on December 7th. And I would just want to state that staff is still the opinion that we do need to move forward with this, so we are in compliance. If we are not, there is potential for us being, for our liability and Cal Recycle implementing those fines to us. There was language in the agreement, number 19, of the agreement that we had, I'm going to read it for you. "If the city receives a citywide exemption from the requirements of SB 1383 on or before June 30th of 2022, it may terminate this Fifth Amendment with written notice to the company. In such event, the Fifth Amendment shall be null and void." I did reach out to CRNR and to legal, our legal counsel, and we can modify that language to the December 31st, 2022, which is a date that was suggested at the last council meeting, as well as some communication from Councilmember Cassidy. I don't think she minds that I mention her name. So if we do back that up to the December 31st date, I just want council to note and to know that it gives CRNR from that point six months to start implementing the program if we were not to receive our waiver. I know that Julie, she'll, she'll weigh in. She had reached out to a city that had been granted the waiver, so she was trying to get a timeline on how fast that process was for them. Another question I wanted to cover was who was responsible to ensure the compliance of this, and that would be both CRNR and the city. CRNR would be going through emptying the trashes. They would tag them somehow and warnings are issued to residents. Speaking with Mike Silva and Julie today, they said there, after several warnings, most people come right into compliance. If not, then the city is notified and our code enforcement would be responsible for sending out letters and then administrative citations will be issued. And those fines start at $100 and then $200 and the third violation is $500. And I will say that with our, the green bag, or the brown bags and the restaurants, that we have the same fines for them. And usually after warnings and then the first violation, we've only once over all the years that we've been doing it have gotten to that $500 fine and that was quite a hit to one of the restaurants. Let's see. I think that's all I really want to cover on the questions that were asked from Council unless they, Council has some further clarification. As I said, Mike and Julie are available.
Sure, just, sure. Just one more clarification before we turn the floor over to CRNR. It is also spelled out in this new staff report that the, the increase in fee wouldn't begin until July of 2023 and that is only if we do not receive the exception. Is that, that a true statement?
The paying the extra money to CRNR is correct.
Okay, great. I just wanted to, to make sure the public knew that.
Yeah, I think you had the, the date wrong. It's 2022, right?
No, so if we're reaching out to December 31st, 2022.
Right. But the actual beginning of the new contract and the updated payment schedule wouldn't begin until July of 2023. We're allowing for that six-month period of time to procure equipment that's necessary in order to process under these new regulations.
Mike and Scott can weigh in, but I believe that we would start paying that to 23 because they have to start implementing, getting the new truck, getting workers, et cetera, to implement the program.
Okay, great. Look, we'll make sure that we clarify that as well, that as well from CRNR's side. Council, do you want to add any other questions or would you, I'm happy to turn it over to CRNR for additional information.
I do have one quick question. Oh, sorry, Annie, go ahead.
No, no, you go ahead, Yesenia.
Okay, so we do know that the services are going to be going down from two to one day of collection, but I'm wondering what will a staff schedule look like if the picks are supposed to triple? Like, does that mean that you're going to add on more staff or will you increase hours for your current employees?
Mike and Julie, are you on?
Yeah.
Yes, I was gonna say, did you want us to cover everything at once or one by one?
Yeah, why don't we, I realize that you guys were prepared for giving some update tonight. So Councilmember De La Rosa and Mayor Marshall, if you guys are okay with it, let's go ahead and let CRNR give us their updates and then we can go back, circle back to questions.
Yep.
That works. So let me start and I'll go ahead and start with, so I don't forget, Councilmember De La Rosa's question. So the answer would be yes, we'd have to add an additional truck, an additional driver with the new commodities. So that was part of our proposed increased cost that Council approved last June. So there was an assumption that we would have to hire additional driver and have an additional truck on the road. Circling back to Mayor Protem's question about when our fees would apply, obviously it is our hope and fingers crossed that we can get the exemption approved for Avalon. However, obviously, we don't want to charge the city either for service or programs that have not been rendered. And so it's going to take us, we're in the same position, as was discussed, we're not going to order the containers or the trucks until we get the final word from Cal Recycle whether or not they're going to approve the exemption. So with that being said, we do need that lead time. We can play that by year. I think that we need a minimum of six months and it could take longer. So I think as we sit here today, it makes sense that it could be July 1 of 2023, but if for some reason, we found out yea or nay on the exemption sooner and we can order equipment sooner, Cal Recycle's desire is going to be to put the program in place as soon as possible. So I guess I, it could be Jan, July, it could be May. I guess that's what I'm trying to say. I don't know that we have a definitive date. It would all depend on when we get the trucks and the equipment and the carts. Typically, we don't charge for a service until we start providing a service. The next thing I did want to share is Denise had mentioned, we recently had our first city that was approved for their exemption and that was Wrightwood. If you're familiar with Wrightwood, it's San Bernardino County. It's where people are skiing right now. It's where people are skiing right now for fun. They submitted their exemption in mid-October and received approval the last week of December. So it was about two and a half months. So, you know, fingers crossed, I think two and a half to three months is reasonable. I've been speaking with Denise. We're gathering final numbers and some additional documentation as to why we think that the city's tonnage was high in the one year that they decided to use as the benchmark, and we think that we can overcome that with a good proposal and documentation. But again, I think I would say three, three months. So again, our hope is to get that submitted, hopefully sometime next week is our goal, to get that submitted to CalRecycle, and then I'll follow up with some phone calls. So I think I will stop there for now and see if there's other questions.
Mayor Marshall, you have a question?
Yeah, I do. Thank you. So I'm looking at this, so that, you know, it's a $10,000 a day fine. So I would hope that the fine would be levied, it says the fine would be levied against the city. But if it really is something out of our control, I, do I imagine there would be a reimbursement from CRNR for those, for those $10,000?
We do have language in the agreement. Yes, we have language in the agreement that protects the city.
And again, I would, I would say that, that what we're talking about with, with, again, state law requires that as of July 1st, you have the organic program in effect. If we've applied for the waiver, and if we're going through the process, we believe that CalRecycle would not impose those $10,000 fees a day, that they would at worst, you know, say like, look, we're going to issue a corrective action plan or some performance improvement plan so that, so, so that you get there. They do have the power to do that. It's a small, it's a risk out there. But given what CalRecycle has done to other cities and in our conversations with CalRecycle, it's a potential out there, but we don't think that that will happen. We think that because we'd be having, we'd have already applied for the waiver with good information, we don't think that they would, they would hit us. So again, I want to say it's a potential out there. It's not likely nor, nor is it a problem.
Right. Well, thank, thank you, City Attorney. But the other thing I want to say, even if we got the exemption, I think we touched on it last time, was that we need to still do stuff to reduce our landfill. So if we still have to go, let's say we get the exemption, but I still think, you know, doing garbage one day and recyclables for the next, anything we can do to help our landfill, we also need to consider. And that might cost us money down the road as well. So, and that's all.
Great. Thank you so much. Just a clarification with city staff, and I'm certainly not going to hold up the, the meeting for this, but would like to address the decision that was made back June, July to increase the fees for trash on the property taxes. It was my understanding that that was happening in order to bridge the gap back then. I wasn't, I guess I'm confused as to, was this already, and was this amount of money already built into that? That was discussed back in July, and, and did I, I just wanted offline, I can go and look at that, but if I could get some clarification from staff on how that all came about?
I'll give you more details, but yes, Cindy, to answer your question, there was a few things. It was looking forward ahead with this SB 1383. It was the cost it was going to be to do the study and to apply to increase the height of our landfill. All of those things combined. So say we don't need to move forward and we get a waiver, then, then we would be able to reduce the charges for solid waste. Is that correct, Matt?
That's correct. So again, just to kind of reiterate Denise's points, there are three things that really drive the increases in the solid waste rates as part of the cost of service study. One of them was the cost of landfill closure and post-closure activities. Previous in the prior study, the contribution was at kind of the historic levels and not the amounts necessary to close the gap, given the lifespan of the landfill. The second piece to it was looking at budgeting costs to potentially expand the capacity of the landfill. My understanding, and Mike Palmer is more involved in the details, but my understanding is there's certain permitting and engineering that needs to be done in order to petition to increase the height of the landfill. And so those costs to do those services were factored in. And then the third piece, and probably the, if not the largest, close to it with the post-closure cost, was the SB 1383 compliance. So we did factor in, in the current year, that we would be paying the increase for a half a year. So during fiscal year '22, that was factored in. Again, the cost of service study is kind of the, the highest. So if, for example, we don't implement or have to implement the costs, we can always factor out what percentage of that made up the cost of service study and back those out when figuring out what the rates need to be in, in future periods. But yes, the, the cost of the SB 1383 contract increase was factored in, or at least an estimated cost was factored in with the rate study.
Fantastic. Thank you for that update. I really appreciate that. And then I do have a, kind of a grouping of questions. It's all kind of the same thing, but I'm just going to list those out for, for Julian, for, for Mike with, for Mike with us tonight. Can you talk to the community a little bit more about the plan? What the plan for lookups or for pickups looks like, starting in this July 2023? How will the pickups take place? What is the process of that? What will the commercial separation look like? And how are we going to handle the trash along, say, public trash receptacles and along Front Street? If you can kind of wrap all those up together, we'd appreciate it.
You want to take that, Julie?
Yeah, let me start, Mike, and I think I'll have you talk about the Front Street.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I guess twofold, do you want me to talk about Mayor Protem? If we get the exemption or if we don't? Which plan?
If we, if we don't.
Okay, so if we don't, what was proposed is, is that all residential customers would now get a three-cart system that would all be picked up on the same collection day. And so they'd have one container for trash, one container for recycling, and one container for organics. And we would have to, because we are adding those three different carts with the three different commodities, we would do that over a five-day work re, work week. So we would have to reroute customers in the city, and we do all the outreach, and there would be a lot of education that goes with that. For commercials, same situation. We would have to have separate bins, and we could do a, a community bin or a shared bin when there's not a lot, when there's space constraints, as we realize there is on, on most parts of the island. But the businesses would also have a separate bin for recycling and a separate cart for organics, which would be a 65-gallon cart. And again, we would service them as needed and as, as required. And obviously, with that goes a plethora of outreach and education, including same things with 1383 as part of our proposal. We are required, or this, I should take that back. The city is required to do auditing, which we refer to in a very high-tech term, lid flipping. So that's how we're calling it. We're doing lid flipping, where we have to have sustainability reps out in the community, sampling roughly 20% of random sampling of residential routes, looking in all three carts to make sure that, that residents are using the carts and putting the right materials in the right cart. If we find that they're putting the wrong material in the wrong cart, we leave a, a nice note that has some education and lets them know that they need to switch where they're putting their materials. We also are required to do annual mailings, electronic communication, any type of social media. And then the same thing goes for your businesses. Same thing, meeting with businesses, talking about organics, flipping lids, doing a lot of outreach and education. So all of that was part of the proposal to implement 1383 from not only delivery of new containers, but all the education and outreach that's required by the law, which is quite a bit more than what exists today. And then all of this auditing and reporting that is also required by the law. And we had proposed to do all of that for the city, which was a part of that initial proposal. Mike, did I miss anything? And then if you could talk about the Front Street.
Yeah, no, you, you got it spot on, Julie. You guys can all hear me, I hope. Anyways, yeah, on Front Street, and I cannot remember the young, the young gentleman that does that for you guys. It's a, it's a separate contract right now.
Yes.
It's collected by a one-man show, but he brings all the stuff to us, which is fine. So he would have to do his three collections where it made sense. I mean, if there's no food in, in a certain area, there's no reason to put a food bin out there. But right now, they have, if you guys remember, most of your setups have two flavors. You have trash and recycling, so he would collect those separately, just like we're going to do. He still brings that stuff already to our facility. We'll put the recyclables with our recyclables, put the trash with the trash. And again, if he ended up going to an organics program, which we'll have to talk to city staff and him, then that organics would also just go with our organics. So we would compost it with our stuff too. So we've coexisted with him for eight or nine years now, so I don't really see it as an issue. He's been easy to work with.
Okay, and I, and I think some of the questions that are coming from the public are, you know, how, so we're going to have three separate bins all along Front Street, and we're somehow going to educate our visitors to the island of what goes where.
Yeah, yeah, I think you're going to, but I mean, I don't think that's unusual out of the order. If you go to any stadium now, any airport, any major facility, they have the, you know, nice-looking, nice-looking setup, I guess you'd call it, with the three holes and the three graphics. So I think that's just going to be industry standard everywhere, not only in your downtown, but we do Newport and Balboa and Corona del Mar. Everybody's going to three containers where there's a lot of food waste. Some places don't have a lot of food waste, maybe by office buildings, things like that. But I think obviously, I've been going to Catalina my whole life, so that, that Front Street is a lot of action down there, as you guys know, especially with tourists coming in and off that boat. So, you know, I don't know if you have to have three containers everywhere that that gentleman collects, but probably most spots will have three flavors.
Okay, great. And then the last question that I have also from community is, I'm sure you already have this concern and have addressed it with other cities, but what happens with the, the random person who throws their trash in someone else's bin because they don't want to separate? How, how do you handle that?
So I'll start, and I'll be very transparent. We're not sure yet. I've had this brought up at several council meetings that I presented, that one will say, hey, I watch a guy come dump his stuff at night because he doesn't have room in his own trash cans, and he comes and dumps in mine. I think that, again, it's, it's an education process. I will be honest, based on communication that I've had, on the residential side, it's really going to be more of education. I'm not sure that we will see actual fines hit unless someone's just blatant that it's week after week after week. Let's just say someone's doing maybe a construction from their home, they have their own business. It, it would have to be a repeat situation for someone to get fined. However, as the example I just used, most folks kind of know somewhat who is that person maybe putting stuff in their trash. And so when they get those, maybe, I hate to say nasty notes, but if they get a note that says, hey, this is a warning, you know, you've been warned three times and you may, you may receive a fine in the future. Hopefully, they might go to that person, or nowadays, everyone has Ring cameras, for better words. They might check Ring cameras or other things. But to be honest with you, I think we're going to take those on a case-by-case because none of that has really started yet. We're just at the beginning stages. And, but it is a concern. It's a concern. I've heard it from a lot of people that they know that folks put stuff in their trash cans that are not theirs.
Yeah, I would say this, though, for the whole council. The three-container system is, is new to Catalina slash Avalon, but we've been doing three containers literally since 1992. We invented it. We put it into Temecula. So we have over, oh my gosh, 200,000 or 300,000 people on three containers. And obviously, when we first start up, people abuse the system, but you know, like I said, we've been doing it for 25 years, and I don't think, I don't know of anybody that's ever gotten fined for dumping their trash in their neighbor's bin. I would say it probably ends up in a fistfight more than code enforcement. You know, they'll, they'll take care of it themselves. I hate to say that. That's reality.
And then along with that as well, in the, the commercial question, apartment complexes here in our community that have dumpsters, will that move to like a three-dumpster situation where they have a green waste bag they're recycling and, and then their regular trash?
Yeah, it, it, it will where we have space. It may end up being a hybrid where, because apartments don't have a lot of food waste, to be honest. People are fairly conservative with their food waste. They may only have a cart for that, but they have a dumpster for their trash or their recyclables. So it'll be, it'll be a combination, like even over here on the mainland, we have a lot of restaurants that just have a cart. They're small. So we will make it, try to fit the right size. We don't want to over-service or underservice anybody. We understand that.
Yeah, if I can add to that, with our sustainability coordinators, that is something that we will, it'll be hand-holding. We'll meet with every business and talk about what's the right service offering for them, try to right-size them. So, you know, really try to work with each individual. We're not just going to go out there and deliver cans and say, oh, you have a three-yard bin, so you're getting a three-yard organics. We really want to meet with them because we want the program to be successful. And anyway, so there's a lot of hand-holding, especially when it comes to the business. They won't just be delivered a container. They'll have a say and, and will work through it, and they'll have a, they'll have a choice.
Great, thank you. Councilmembers Ponce and Councilmember Lavelle, do you guys have any questions you want to add before we open it up to the public?
I have this time.
I'm good.
Great. Matt, do we have any comments from the public?
We do have one comment. Deb Alavano, "The notion of the city, aka taxpayers, picking up the tab for CRNR's non-compliance status at the 11th hour and for citizens like myself receiving half-service, one pickup per week instead of two, for the same fees, just under 6K. To me, may I mention the unsanitary conditions and attraction to vermin this may create? This non-compliance status is not news to the operator, which I believe is the operator's responsibility as they sign the initial contract and accepted the monies. Their request for a code officer just for trash citations also absurd. Thank you, but no."
Can I address that real, can I address that real quick, my mayor?
Please.
Yeah, we're, you're not non-compliant, and we're not non-compliant. The program we're promoting is for future to comply with these new laws. So nobody's out of compliance at this point in time. So I just, the facts are not correct. That's all.
I'd like to respond to something that the mayor had said earlier that, granted, Annie. We are, CRNR and the city signed an agreement, and they will still adhere to the agreement of sorting all the recyclables. And, you know, they do the CND when we have bulky item pickup. They have to sort through that if it's mattresses, if it's untreated wood. They do the green waste composting. And I know that Mike Silva and Julie were telling me today that the recyclables, if they do it in two runs, so Mike, maybe you could expand on that. A lot of that stuff gets sent to the island, off the island, and it's sorted over there because it's more efficient.
Yeah, so what we're going to do is obviously, we're going to do is obviously go to the source separation. And historically, we've been throwing it in with the trash, and then we had to run the MRF. We can no longer run that MRF. It's not built for that. It's not staffed for that, and it's not built for social distancing. So we're going to take the recyclables separate and take them to the mainland to be sorted. We have two or three facilities over here that are way more high-tech than that facility over there. And to be honest, they end up over here anyways. So even if we sorted them over there, the first thing we do is send them to Long Beach. So now we'll send them over to Long Beach all mixed. It'll be much cleaner, much faster for everybody. But that'll be part of the plan to do source separation versus doing this mixed thing they've been doing for a long time.
Okay, any other comments from, not seeing anything else from the community, Matt?
That, that is the only comment I have.
Okay, great. So I believe, Council, do you have some direction? Would anybody like?
To authorize the city manager to execute the Fifth Amendment to the franchise and lease agreement between the City of Avalon and CRNR, Inc.
Is there a second?
I'll second. I want to verify, are we keeping the initial date that's in there in Section 19? Or am I changing that date and any other corresponding date in the Fifth Amendment to reflect the December 13th?
to reflect the December 31st, December 31st, 2020 date?
Councilmember Ponce, would you be interested, be interested in amending your motion to include the change of date to December 31st, 2022?
I amend my motion to include the change of date.
I'll second that change.
Thank you. Denise, call for the vote.
Councilmember De La Rosa.
Aye.
Councilmember Lavelle.
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Cassidy.
Aye.
Mayor Marshall.
Aye.
Certainly want to thank everybody, Mike Silva, Julie, city staff, Mike Palmer, everybody, Scott Campbell, for all the hard work in getting us back to this point. And I know that was a long two weeks, but I very much appreciate the ability to talk this through and create a level of comfort, of comfort for our community. So thank you very much for the extra time. All right, we are moving to the last item on our agenda under general business.
This is the City of Avalon Fiscal Year One Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Fiscal year ended June 30th of 2021. I'm going to let Matt Baker take it over from there.
Great.
So I just want to quickly introduce John Foster. He is the audit partner with Davis Farr LLP. So he was the partner on the audit. He's prepared just a brief presentation, which kind of goes over the, kind of the basic components of the audited financial statements. If there are any questions after his presentation for either him or myself, I'm happy to answer any questions. But with that, I'll turn it over to John.
Thank you, Matt. Let me see if I have permission here to start the slideshow. Okay, I'm currently disabled at the moment. Is it possible to get permission to display my, my slides?
One second.
Sure.
Yep, I, I just switched you to the host.
Okay.
You're good to go.
Everyone see that okay?
Perfect.
Okay, great. I just wanted to thank council for the opportunity to present. I'd like to give an overview on the audit process and any items noted in the audit and answer any questions you may have. So the reports we issue as part of the audit is the opinion on the basic financial statements. We issue an appropriations limit, agreed upon procedures, also known as your GAN limit. In addition, we issue two separate letters, which is a summary of audit results and a report on internal control and compliance. Within those letters, we communicate any items noted within the audit. The summary of audit results displays any notes that we feel are significant and should be communicated to the council. In addition, any material journal entries detected during the audit. We also issue a report on internal control and compliance. Happy to note, no items of noncompliance were noted. We did note it, note one issue over internal control, and those were journal entries detected during the audit. And we issued a separate recommendation over controls over the inventory at the stockyard. The opinion includes unmodified opinion on the financial statements. What that means is as auditors, we did not have to modify opinion, modify the opinion. So the term unmodified is actually the highest level of opinion you can receive, and it means that in our opinion, your financial statements are not materially misstated. Areas of audit focus that we focus on during the year, cash investments. We confirm 100% of your cash investments through a third party, meaning directly through confirmations. They give the information directly back to us and we don't receive the information directly back from the city. Capital assets, we perform a review of projects that the city has performed during the year. As part of that review, we meet with finance and any project managers that are included, that are involved in that project, make sure they're appropriately reflected in your financial statements. We also take a dive into your pension and OPEB liabilities. We obtain third party actuarial reports, make sure there are proper disclosures and the liabilities are reflected correctly in your financial statements. Any outstanding debt by the city, we also confirm externally with third parties as well and receive that information directly to us, the auditors, and make sure it's appropriately reported in your financial statements. Lastly, internal controls, we were on site for the final examination of your audit. So we performed a walkthrough of your internal controls. So we're happy to note that in that area of operations, we did not note any deficiencies in internal controls. At this time, I wanted to go over some highlights of your financial statements. What's displayed here is your statement of net position for your governmental activities and business type activities. Overall, your total assets went up mainly due to increased cash and receivables within the city. The reopening of the economy was a big driver for this. The harbor fund specifically showed increased receivables of more than $400,000. And on the city side of things, there was an additional 1.5 million in various taxes receivable for the governmental activities of the city. Here, we are displaying the liabilities of the city. Total liabilities increased approximately 2.6 million. This was mainly due to the timing of some accounts payable. Accounts payable are short term liabilities that depending on payments, get accrued at year end. In addition, you'll note your net pension liability and your net OPEB liability showed significant increases. These increases are driven again by third party actuarial reports and is based on their estimates and judgment of what your outstanding liability is. The net position is a good indicator of the health of the city, and I'll talk about a little bit on the difference between your net position here and your general fund and what's displayed in government wide statement. So here, here you'll see your overall net position in the city increased about 1.3 million. Most of your net position here is driven by your investment in capital assets. So you'll see the total net position, you show a positive net position of $18 million. And I'll show the difference between here and what's driven in the general fund. So the operational aspect of the general fund, you can see here, there was a significant increase in budgeted revenues. Again, this is due to the reopening of the economy. Current year revenues are shown here about 11.37 million dollars. To put this in perspective, prior year revenues came in at 9.7 million dollars for the general fund. The largest driver here is an increase of transient occupancy taxes. This year, they came in at slightly over $6 million, which was an increase of more than 1.5 million dollars from the prior year. The city continues to save money by budgeting expenses. Prior expenditures were approximately 10.1 million. The city budgeted more expenditures this year, however, it came in at approximately $9 million. The biggest driver here were savings across all categories. In addition, there were large capital expenditures budgeted that did not occur during the fiscal And due to differences in accounting between government wide and your general fund, you'll see a change here in your fund balance. So overall, in the general fund, the fund balance increased from 4.5 million to 6.7 million dollars. These differences arise from financial reporting aspects. So in the government wide statement of net position, you will see things such as capital assets, your net pension liability, your net OPEB liability added to the statements here, whereas the general fund here is a short term snapshot of the health of the main operating fund of the city. So at this time, I will stop the slideshow and open it up for any questions that anyone may have.
Let's start with council. Is there anybody on the council that has a question?
Nothing so far.
Great. Are there any questions, Matt, from the community?
I don't have any comments. The one thing I just wanted to add, if anyone is interested in more information, we do have a section included within the financials called the MDNA Management Discussion and Analysis. And it really goes over a lot of what Jonathan has already said, just in a little more detail. So we look at changes from the prior year to the current year over the various financial statements. And it really does give a good summary of, of all the information in there. So if you are looking for some additional information as a member of the public, I would encourage you to read the, the MDNA section, which is included in the audited financials.
Great, thank you very much. This, this was a, this was a wonderful audit to receive and great job. And thank you, Davis Farr, for your, for your guys' contract with us and keeping us on track. If there are no other comments, is there a motion?
The only other question I have. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Danny.
No, I just, I want to just thank Matt and his staff for doing an excellent job. Madden and your staff for following all the protocols and everything you do to give it, to give us a wonderful audit, especially during these terrible times. You've done an excellent job, sir. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. The only question I had was one of the recommendations that was listed regarding inventory and looking at, I had mentioned a program called GoGo to Denise just this past week and wondered if that or something similar that tracks not only the customer side of things, but potentially the inventory side of things might be beneficial? If we can look at that as part of the next round of budgeting, that would be great. And with that, I'll make a motion to receive and file the comprehensive annual financial report and other audit reports for the fiscal year ended June 28th, 30th, 2021.
And I will second.
I'll second.
Great, thank you. Call for the vote, please.
Councilmember De La Rosa.
Aye.
Councilmember Lavelle.
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Cassidy.
Aye.
Mayor Marshall.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, for, and for attendance tonight and getting through some great conversation. With that, we'll say good night, Tony, and we are adjourned.
Good night.